America, which is the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sure. Yeah, it'll be open in a public hearing in a couple of minutes. For the Stacy Boll area variance. Okay, parcel that the applicant represents is located at 9997 Fargo Road. Parcel in totality is about a seventeen point two five acre parcel. The actual frontage of the entire parcel is approximately six hundred and eighty-four feet. It's an approximation of the map here. What the request for is an area variance to create a lot that does not meet the minimum lot frontage sizes outlined in the town area zoning law. The town zoning law requires three hundred feet frontage for a compliant lot. The proposal is for a lot that is two hundred and fifteen feet in frontage but would comply with the overall area requirements, which the minimum area requirement would be eighty thousand square feet. So just, I'll just outline here so people can kind of see what the proposal would look like. The existing house would maintain a fifty foot setback from the adjacent parcel line and the parcel as proposed would run approximately parallel to the existing line and come back approximately here and come across here. And the proposed lot would be approximately that shape. So that's the proposal as is presented. So it requires an application to the zoning board of appeal for variance on the three hundred foot requirement.
Genesee County says the proposed variance opposed no significant countywide or intercommittee impact. It is recommended that the applicant submit a attached application for nine-one-one address verification to the Genesee County Sheriff's Office to ensure that an address is assigned that meets enhanced nine-one-one standards.
Well, that's the question, yeah, sure. What's lot in use for?
It's just me speaking. My mother or daughter who sold us the house a couple of years back. My father recently passed away and the only reason why my mom was obtaining a residential house in the town of Titoago was to be closer to my father, his doctors and stuff like that. He recently passed away about two months ago, so my mother is looking to maintain her independence because she does have some health issues and build a modular home next to us so that she could be closer. Unfortunately, she wasn't old enough to fall under the Echo law that we're lucky enough to have in the town of Genesee.
We live across the street from the property. My concern is there is a drainage pipe that goes underground under the road and according to how the property is graded, the front of my property is wet enough all year long. If they don't grade that properly, we're going to absorb all the fluid.
We do have a lower ground level there, so anything that we would build up would be for only the purpose of stability for the house that we will be building there. It will maintain a lower level there and the only other thing that we would be doing is putting in a driveway. So there wouldn't be no substantial land buildup because it does get there wet as well, like you said. And there is proper drainage across the whole front of our property as well.
As you can see there, in the purple there, where these trees are, where my cursor is, is approximation. These lines are approximations of the property line, so the property line is over here someplace. So I believe from what you've described to me, the house you're proposing to situate in the lot would be of a smaller size?
Yep, it would be around a thousand square foot. It's a modular home.
Yeah, it'd have to meet, so it would meet the minimum size requirements under zoning law for single-family structure?
Yes.
And the proposal would have to meet the setback requirements and also they're trying, they want to maintain a setback similar to the, to the house that you're living in.
Correct. Yep, it'll be about a hundred and eighty feet is what we measured and what we've gotten quotes on everything we need on that. So it's not going to be on top of the road. It actually will be in the, if you look at our neighbor right next door and look at our house, it would be almost in the middle of where those two houses lay. Yeah, it's pretty decent distance.
With proper drainage?
Yep.
I'm the neighbor. So when I sit on my front porch, I'm going to look at the back of their house.
Well, I look at the front of your house when I sit on my porch, so what does it matter?
Am I here to argue or am I here to say my piece?
Go ahead.
When I bought that lot twenty years ago, it was because I knew there wasn't going to be any other structures built between me and my neighbors. I moved from my desk to live in a countryside to where there was space, where I thought the area was three hundred feet road frontage to build. Isn't there other options? I mean, they could have it in a law apartment. You could have it on the other side of the house.
We raise farm there. That's where we do our livestock and cropping over there.
So that means you give intrusive army?
And Echoes are both sides of our property. I mean, even the neighbor to our left, which was when he bought the property, it was the understanding that there wouldn't be any houses basically on top of us on either side of the road or the lot. That's the reason why the top property was blocked the way it was.
That's the reason I chose that lot to buy it, because there wasn't going to be a house on top of us.
Well, we're going to be building further on the side of the property. She's not going to be right next to you.
No, it's less than three hundred feet and that's why I got to look at it.
Well, if I may say, there's numerous properties in the same exact area, if I'm not mistaken, one or two lots down from you that are actually smaller than the ones that we're trying to get a land of variance for today.
Besides that, those lots will go grandfathered. That I agree with Mr. Phillips, that I bought my place because there was three hundred foot requirement there and suddenly there isn't going to be one. I have an empty lot between me and my neighbor, Mr. Phillips, and if he can get a variance to build, then why can't I do the same?
And cannot too. Before I move out and I get a variance, sell a lot, make an extra thirty grand and then sell my house?
As I said, my father passed away and my mother would like to maintain a residence there.
Just put a giant addition. You could come try in the room to the mother and... I'm not here to argue either way. I'm stating them to the board. You don't have to talk to me. I'm talking to them.
I'm talking to everybody.
So I feel it's intrusive and when I go to sell my house, somebody wants a countryside like I did when I bought the house. There's going to be a house a lot closer. That's why I moved out here.
Sir, could you zoom out so the rest of the room can see how close the other houses are?
Yep, that's what I'm going to do.
Thank you. And could you measure those distances as well, please?
Pull out my other measure. He's on a three hundred foot lot.
I do know that all of the lots on Bell Road have the appropriate frontage because they were all subdivided in the more recent past. This lot's three hundred feet. This one was existing, but they subdivided the farm off down through here. This lot's three hundred feet. This lot, I believe, is undersized, but I don't know. I can tell you in a second here. That lot is approximately a hundred and forty-two feet. And we look at information on the lot. Here is this. That's two point six nine acres, so that was built in nineteen fifty. I could not tell you what the, what the zoning laws were in nineteen fifty, but I do know that this second piece of land here is actually the old rail bed right of way. So if you measure this in conjunction, would that be about two hundred and fifty feet? If that makes sense or doesn't make sense, I don't know why. You know, I make certain suppositions when I look at lots to try and figure out why things were built the way they were and when they were, so I couldn't tell you why and I'm not going to guess as to why, but that lot was built in nineteen fifty, so that structure's been there for seventy years. Then you've got the old rail right of way. When you get down into this part of the neighborhood here, these structures are much older, so the lot sizes you'll find are different shapes and sizes over the years, but the structures were built many years ago. So if we look at this lot, let's see. Frontage here is about two hundred and fifty feet. This lot, this lot across the street is actually owned, these three parcels are actually owned by one individual. I do not know why in today's environment, if somebody came up with an application on this parcel, the first thing I would do is request that they make a merger of these three parcels and make them one contiguous parcel. That was not done in the past and I don't know why the structure was built. The structure was built in eighteen seventy. The structure was built in nineteen hundred. So when you get into these older structures, you'll see that the lot sizes are all different shapes and sizes, so a lot is predated zoning. But that'll give you, that gives you an idea of the layout of that neighborhood. And if we zoom out, we're going to lose, we're going to lose the tax parcel outlines. Well, not at this point, but these lots are all, these lots are all subdivided in the recent past, so they're all three hundred foot. But the older structures, so you get a mixed neighborhood, so it gives you an idea of what's there and why. Then if you go the other way, you get into a combination of newer and older structures. This is vacant land here. Not vacant, it's more recreational land. That's essentially vacant. These are large lots. This lot is an older house that was built in nineteen fifty-seven, so that's been there for many years. Smaller lot. There are newer homes here. These lot sizes are all, have all been subdivided out.
Well, we're not talking about far, that's somewhere.
It's within, it's not even under a half a mile away from the property. It's the same surrounding area.
I think it's an idea neighborhood.
I don't see why we have to compare the properties that we found here.
I'm not comparing. A question was asked and so I show, I'm showing the adjacent parcels and throughout the neighborhood and you'll find that in any neighborhood in the town. I understand that anybody in town can make an application to the zoning board of appeals and each application is based on the merits of its own case, so just so you understand, just because some, one person applies for variance, that doesn't mean that everybody that comes after that asking for variance gets it or doesn't get it. Each case has to stand on its own merits and this one will stand, you know, this one will stand on its own. And that's why we, that's exactly why we have the public hearing, so everybody can come in, everybody can be heard, the applicants can make their case and then you have a board of individuals that reside in the town to make a decision.
But if one is making a variance, doesn't that set precedence for others that...
No.
I mean, I know, understand they all have to have their own case.
Right.
But they can use that as well, as well down to why not me?
Exactly. People will make that argument, but as a matter of legal standing and as it's interpreted by the courts and under the law, is that each case stands on its own. In other words, just because a board will make a decision in one case, a similar case that could come up, the board can rule in the opposite fashion and they aren't, they don't have to be interrelated.
And like I said, we did try to file for the Echo law, which states that a parent over a certain age can build an establishment on your property, but it has to be removable as well, so when they pass, they, that the house can be easily removed, such as a modular home. Unfortunately, my father passed away at such a young age, leaving my mom at such a young age, she was unable to meet those requirements, so this was our next step for filing for something like that.
I feel it's a burden on me and my home. And people coming to buy it if I want to sell it.
I apologize if me and my family sticking together is a burden on you.
Wait, can we stop arguing? Gentlemen, sit over here. Which house is yours?
Right next door. They want to put between their house and my house.
I'm just trying to understand.
Your, your house, one zero zero two five.
I am here.
That's yours.
That's my property line. They are here. They want to put it here. I'm sitting here looking at that. And I got a nice open field here and I can grow up here, same as here. Reason I bought that lot twenty years ago was no one could build. That's how it was presented. No one could build. I came to the town, can anyone build there? They said no. That is correct at the time. Why did you put it on me? Excuse me, sir, we could have a town. I understand, I think you made your case. My name is Al Sine, by the way. You are absolutely correct that at that time, only three hundred foot frontages were the wall. We could have a town like, like per inch. I understand what you're saying. If we put water district in, that probably would have changed the way we view frontages because, I think it would have changed the way we view frontages because of wells and stuff. And so even in the future, this doesn't really necessarily regard this thing, but in the future, you could change, the town could change requirements of our frontage law.
They have.
But they have, that's correct.
And the town also did not want the water district because it's a burden on everybody in the town, I feel, and apparently enough people in the town felt the same.
I understand what you're saying. What if mom decides to move to Florida? And what are we going to do? They going to sell it?
No, actually, part of our contract in giving my mom the property was that we get the rights to the property and the house be removed. My mother is building a home here so she can keep her independence, so she doesn't have to wake up every single day and stare at the chair that my father sat in for years and years.
Not only that, and health issues.
Okay, my mother has health issues and I have five children. Like I said, I purchased that home from my father. They signed that home over to us. We paid them for it. Don't you think that my mother deserves to spend the last few years of her life somewhere where she enjoys and looking at her grandchildren every day? Because I don't know how about you and your relationship with your mother, but I'll be damned if my mother has to go another day alone.
Over and, over behind, over on the other side of the house.
And I'm unable, I...
You have a legal part that you could do.
I raise livestock there.
It's not peaceful. So your burden is not necessarily my burden.
Well, and yours is not mine.
And what...
That's what neighbors are supposed to do, is work together.
And it's not. Come on now, shh. Let's just have one at a time, please. There's some people...
I was speaking and then I was interrupted five times.
I want to hear from everyone. There's a, a gentleman in the back who's going to say something. You haven't heard from him yet.
So what happens if, say, the pipeline doesn't go through and I want to put a massive Gabriel barn in the middle there?
That's fine.
So what's the difference between a house that's, hang on, a house that's staying in the family versus a big hole in?
Because by law, you could do it. You wouldn't need a van.
By law, we can't do this. We're going through the hoops to do this.
By law.
And we're here.
By law says, sit down and see.
By law says that I can bring it to court and ask for...
If it wasn't possible, it wouldn't be here. If it wasn't possible, we wouldn't be here discussing this. It would be, I know.
I'm sure if you had family members that were ill and needed help, that...
I would move them into my home and take care of them.
Well, like I said, I have five young children, ages from two to twelve. It is a bit crazy at sometimes. Yes, we could be loud. Yes, my dogs get out. Yes, my chickens get in the road, but we love each other and we stick together and this is my turn to take care of my family.
Well, maybe you should have bought bigger lot. Sorry, this was the laws of the area that I mind too.
I just feel that for my mom, she does build a house, but she'll be hearing you guys are new more instead of us.
We bought our property in two thousand and six with the guidelines that you had to have five acres before you could put a structure on the land. I agree with this gentleman that we bought it to come out in the country to have peace and quiet and space between us. If people could, the only available property when we completed our sale was down Bell Road and they made that farmer divide it equally according to your bylaws. I prefer not to have house on top of house on top of house and I think everybody in our neighborhood would go the same. We were told no subdivisions, no additional properties other than what was already broken up and now this...
And we are the closest people to that house right now.
They just are putting an addition on the house. Why couldn't they put an extra room or two on?
I wasn't planning on my father from the way, for the mom's care. I wasn't planning on my father passing away.
Well, you still can do it.
The renovation is far from completed. You could still put another added addition.
But the last thing, there's other options that they have.
Those other options aren't good enough for my mother who has health issues, sir. To the whole board, I should say.
You want that closeness to live in Titoago. That's close. You guys, to me, I feel that it's separate, that you have ample space. It's not like I'm retreating.
But you have eighteen acres you could build behind your home and not absorb any frontage.
And that would be very costly to have the water when it does come through and the connections.
She meant gas and electric cookups is very expensive. They charge per foot and we're already setting back a hundred and eighty feet so we can maintain the appearance of the residential community because we do like it, just as you do, and that's why we're setting the house back at a hundred and eighty feet.
Again, your burden is not your neighbor's burden. Is there anyone here that hasn't spoken that would like to add any additional insight,
I have a comment. I just don't understand. I know the dialogical process and this is part of it, but like you said, I'd be able to put a massive Gabriel barn in the middle there, but since it's a garage or a barn, it's a totally different story versus eleven hundred square foot home. If I put a massive Gabriel barn there, that would be an even bigger burden on my neighbor, but that's...
I don't think so because it's a farming community.
I've been interrupted.
That's my, that is just the point I'm trying to make. That's all I have to say.
Is this, you were talking, the structure you're intending to build, it's permanent, right?
No, it's a semi-permanent building. It will not be, it will be synced to the ground, but it will be removable.
It's capable to be removable.
Yeah. It sits on piers?
Yes.
You got your skirt here?
It's very nice. The house two doors down from our neighboring is a modular home. There's numerous modular homes.
And all main buildings?
It's the same size as the one on the...
Modular double wide?
It's a modular home.
Right, a bigger modular.
Yes, they do. They give us the option to set it on a concrete pad or put it on here.
It's a changed over the years.
Yep.
It's an obligation.
Nope.
On piers.
Nope, it's on piers and it's by whole.
Put it on piers. An engineered system.
Yep, there's so many PSI per pier.
When I pass, when I pass, I hope I have a lot more time, she will be able to remove it.
Yes.
The whole house is, does meet all building requirements.
Matter of fact, if you go down Fargo, there's someone that has the exact same one that's...
That my mother is building. It's almost right by the corner. Actually, that's part of the Echo law for Genesee County is if a parent is six years older, and like I said, she was only four years shy of that unfortunately, but with her health issue, this was our next step to do. With the Echo law, you're allowed to build a complete residential home for a parent on your property as long as it's removable, so when they pass, I can't up and sell it. Like my neighbor is concerned, you know, and I understand that, but it is a removable structure that, I don't know if everybody, I'm sure all of you are aware of the Echo law, but that is something that we looked into as well because we have neighbors and we understand.
Unfortunately, all the requirements, none of the requirements are being met.
That's why we have laws in zoning law. What not correct? Do we uphold laws or we just change them? How do I live in that, at that concern? I feel it lowers my property value.
Like I said, everyone, the establishment is removable.
Yeah, the way I look at it, laws change every day. I just found out that you have to have only two layers of roof on your house. Things change.
Well, they haven't yet.
So it's not just property value. You have a home that is going to be removable.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, we have a home that we want to sell it, who knows when, that they do comparison by the homes near you, next to you. by your homes near you, next to you, that's going to lower our value of our home by the assessment of the house that's removable.
No, it's not, it looks just like the house that is on the other side of your house.
It's a house.
It's a modular home.
Things are, they've gotten way better over the years. If you went 10 years, looked at a modular.
I could pick a concrete landing and then adhere it to there or plop it on there, but that concrete landing costs 26,000 more dollars.
Is there anybody else? If not, we'll post a public hearing.
Yep.
Going back and forth here.
I'd like to make a motion to deny the hearing for 9997.
All right, so this was denied. I think from here, they'd have to go talk to you about a different option, I guess.
Yeah, that's a, to the different path.
It's okay, all time for the Echo law, but they can be closer to your house and for you.
Oh, Jesus.
Thank you.
That's the exact kind of neighbors they are, they wouldn't want any more like, more likes thing, just so you're aware.
I'll start him.
Anthony, first, Michael second, all eyes?
Yeah.
Okay.